I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of announcements. The Grafton Select Board is looking for interested volunteers to fill two vacancies on the Council of Aging, a Council on Aging, and one vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please apply by Thursday, February 15 via email to taoffice@grafton-ma.gov. You can also apply through our online portal, or you could send a letter of interest to the Select Board at 30 Providence Road. Select Board members Amory Foley and Mark Almo will host an Ask Me Anything at the Grafton Historical Society on Thursday, March 7 at 7:00 p.m. The Inspector of Buildings Bob Berger will be joining them as well as a special guest. And we have no public hearings. We do have some appointments. And our first appointment is Paul Grady to the Agricultural Commission.
We have Paul on Zoom.
Hi, Paul. You are still on mute?
Hi.
Hi. Welcome to the meeting. Thanks a lot for coming. If you want to, you can just introduce yourself, tell us what your background is, and yeah, why you're interested in the Agricultural Commission.
Okay, yeah, I, my name's Paul Grady. I live up on the top of Potter Hill. I was planning on coming tonight, but I got a little cold, so I figured I'd keep that to myself.
Thank you.
So yeah, it's not a very far commute down there, but I run Potter Hill Farm. I've run it for maybe seven years. I took a year off a few years ago. Because I have two little ones and balancing farming and family has been, you know, difficult. But before, before running this farm, I worked for the guy that started Potter Hill Farm for a couple of years. And I worked also at Community Harvest Project for three years, which is just through the woods. Hopefully you guys all know about the Community Harvest Project. It's a great organization. But yeah, I just, I heard about this. A customer of mine forwarded me an email saying that the town was looking for a volunteer to be on the Ag Committee and definitely something that I'm passionate about. And yeah, I just wanted to help however I, however I can.
Fantastic. Thanks. Any questions, comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll take most.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Paul Grady to the Agricultural Commission.
Second. I have a motion and a second. We have Ray on, actually, we need to take roll call as well, but I will get to this motion first. By roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Almo?
Almo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Congratulations and thanks so much for your volunteerism, Mr. Grady. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like, or feel free to take off.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'll get the girls to bed.
Sounds good. We gotta have priorities. Next up, we have the Tufa IBC alternate member, Jennifer Nakajoba. At the Health Alliance. Don't see her in person or online, so barring that, I will take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Jennifer Nakajoba as the alternate ex officio non-voting member of the Tufa University Institutional Biosafety Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Almo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
All right, the motion carries. I am supposed to take roll call at the beginning of the meeting, so let's just do that. So present is Mr. Mead. Just say present.
I did. Present.
And we have Mr. Almo.
Almo's present.
And Oftan is present.
Jefferson, present.
Foley is present.
And Mr. Blake
Present.
is also present. Thank you. All right, great. Next up, we have election workers. We've got Alan Capewell and Ryan Tierney.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to appoint Alan Capewell and Ryan Tierney as the election workers for the town of Grafton.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Almo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next up, we have town administrator appointments. We have an auxiliary firefighter Connor Burns.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Connor Burns as an auxiliary firefighter at Station 3.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Almo, aye.
Oftan, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next up, we have new business. We have Mr. Spinney, who is going to bring us up to speed on 1727 Upton Street. That's the GSX Development. And he's representing the Affordable Housing Trust. Good evening, Mr. Spinney.
Good evening. Appreciate you putting me on the agenda. Thanks for having me here. So I'm here representing the Affordable Housing Trust to reignite an initiative that we kind of started a couple of years ago with the 1727 Upton Street project, which was to come to the Select Board and ask for the waivers for, to reimburse the trust's end of the, our commitment to the project. So it went unfunded for a good period of time. There was some back and forth. Now we're pretty comfortable and confident that funding is in place for the entirety of the project. So it's time for me to come back to the board as you're the executive board. Authority over the permits and the fees associated with it. So I wanted to start that process, give any, an update, take any questions on the particular project. When I say 1727 Upton Street, for those folks at home, that's the old highway barn. And it's a 130, give or take, units affordable housing program in the overlay district. It is in the process of going through Conservation Commission and will start the rest of its permit process probably over the next two months. The biggest concern was making sure that it actually had adequate funding to get it to the finish line. Now that it does, everything should take off relatively quickly. It's a special permit process, so it's not quite as long as the ZBA process for the variance for a traditional 40B. There's not many waivers that are being requested in the process, and of course, it's a special permit. So it's up with the planning board. So one of the things that we had asked for back when we started this process with them is essentially speaking, the trust underwrote a grant agreement for $2 million with the assumption that we would be able to recoup some of the expenses that were on the town side. So sewer hookup fees, permit fees. And then Evan had started a process with the Water District to get some reimbursement back to the town for the water hookup fees as well. And what we were trying to do is keep the grant program down to right around a million. So if you took all those permits, added them up, we were essentially subsidized $2 million to get the project off the grounds with a developer. And then over the course of the permitting process, when we get to the ends, so to speak, we would get those fees waived and that would come out of our side of the $2 million. So we would get a direct reimbursement by way of having the fees waived. So I basically was the point person for the trust to start this process. Now, it's been a while. So a few meetings ago, I was nominated again to start the process. So we're revisiting. What I would like to do now is now that everything's kind of forward facing and looks like it has some good momentum is get this papered properly. And then we can set everything off and then start the construction process. So does anybody have any questions about the actual project, where it's at now? What it's going to consist of, or any other features?
So just from a process standpoint, the Affordable Housing Trust has issued a grant to basically where the developer agrees to go above and beyond the required amount of affordable units. So sort of the trust is buying additional affordable units. And the grant is, it's, what is it, 1.9?
It's a little over 1.8 million.
Got it, 1.8 million. So and then on the back end, any basically costs that the town is in control of that can reimburse the trust for things like permitting fees and connection fees and those sorts of things will reduce the amount of I guess, funds, funding outlay that the trust will need to, to provide for these units.
So we essentially pay as a 50-50 split. So all the soft costs that are upfront, permitting fees, architectural survey work, engineering work, all those things that are on the front end of the project, we're going 50-50 with the developer. So when we get to the point where there's, you know, we would have to pay a permit for water hookup fee, sewer hookup fee, et cetera, et cetera. We would ask that the towns waive those fees and then we just wouldn't put that money in. And it would stay in the trust coffers for the next project, which we assume would be 25 Lister Street, which is probably a couple of years away, but still there. So essentially, the overlay district that's in 1727 Upton Street was put in there by town meeting kind of just for that particular, you know, site. So the overlay district requires that the developer have 10% affordability. It's an apartment complex, so we looked to GSX at the time. It's still GSX now. There'll be another entity that takes over as the partnership, you know, gets clarified. We approached them and said, look, we want you to go to the 25% mark, which of course would make all 130 units count on our SHI. Now, this is three or four years ago. I know we have a lot more projects that are in the works, but this looks like it's going to get done. So we essentially bought down 15% of the units. So right around 17 or 18 units, we did a buy down program, which is, you know, there's a lot of iterations on how, you know, some other trusts and some other organizations handle these type of grant programs in the state, but this is the way we went. It's just taken a long time to get to this particular point. But now that it's there, it should go relatively quickly. Which is good. So it's also, we'll knock down that building, put in a sizable amount of parking. A good deal of which will be public parking, which is close to the common, which I know is something that's been talked about quite a few times over the past few weeks and the past couple of years. Probably 50, maybe 55 spots will be, have public access to them. And the great thing about those is they'll also be maintained by the apartment complex too. So plowing, striping, maintenance and stuff like that is, would all be on their end as well. But you'd have access to it.
And that's in the spot where the current barn is.
The old tree barn was.
Yeah, okay.
So how our bylaw works is you're allowed to have a certain amount, percentage of your parking as your parking per unit ratio as reserved parking.
Great.
It's probably about a $30 million building as well, from an economic development standpoint. With the, the demographic that will probably, probably be marketed to, you know, which is generally speaking, 55 plus. The level of service requirements from a town's perspective is very minimal. So you'll, it'll be about a 28, $30 million building at our current tax rate. If you just marked down, you know, 20% for the services that are going to be required by those residents, which is very high. You're still looking at $350,000 or $400,000 a year in revenue. That's on the plus side. So not only from an ideological perspective and the affordability component, you're getting 30-something units, you're getting 150, or 130 counting in as SHI. And you're also getting a sizable amount of money for a property that's doing nothing but rotting now. You're also getting it cleaned up as well. So taking out the tanks and taking care of the other remediation that was required from highway barn being used for the last 100 years. Does anybody else have anything for me?
Is that parking, shared parking, about 50, those 50 spaces?
Yes. Yep.
So people that live there and then people that want to go to the common or whatever?
Exactly. Yep. It's a decent spot for it, you know, the, the site has a lot of complications, you know, it's kind of just a little peninsula in the middle of wetlands. So there's a lot of work you have to do to try to squeeze everything in there. And the costs associated, associated with having a below ground or above ground parking garage is going to be, you know, prohibitive as far as the costs are concerned. So being able to alleviate the, the bylaws give you some degree of latitude as far as where you can put that parking. So that particular reserved parking is allowable for public space.
So those spots wouldn't be connected directly to the, where the buildings are, where people would live?
But I think we're going to have to connect them. I mean, the special permits, I, I just can't imagine that it wouldn't require a connective sidewalk. I think the assumption that can be made that we'll connect all the sidewalks to make sure it gets to the common one way or the other, whether it's down the rail or down the side. We've had preliminary discussions with the railroad just to make sure there's no complications in getting across the crossing. I mean, we'll see what happens when it comes time to actually ask the permission, but we feel pretty comfortable with our position there. So, which is good because that can be an onerous type of affair, as we've all seen over the past 10 years.
Absolutely.
So.
So sitting right across from the library, that's a, would be a great spot for additional parking for the common.
Yeah, it'd be great for the businesses there, especially those that are stacked on that side.
Absolutely.
There's a crossing that, where the Unitarian Church is now, the old bank, the Grafton Inn, you know, there's a railroad crossing and then a crosswalk there. There'll be some, some flexibility and hopefully we can work something out with the owners, whoever they may be of that particular parcel to provide the connectivity to that back crosswalk, which would be the goal. So, which would be great, because then it'd be about 500 feet away and it's a good amount of parking. I know there's quite a bit of parking at the library, but psychologically speaking, something about having to cross the street and to do this, exciting it over, you know, a lot of people don't use those spots. This would be great for the actual businesses right there. And it's about a year and a half away. Would be my guess. Six months for a special permit process. I'm sure Bob can attest to how quickly we can move this through the, the planning board. And then construction.
Other Bob?
Yeah, I just saw him on the corner of my eye.
Uh, great. Mr. Mead.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so Bruce, so I hate to bring up old news, but, but you know, we've reduced permits before for this developer and, and nothing's gone through. So is the, is the Affordable Housing Trust going to hold this money in abeyance? Is that what you said, for these permits? Because right now, you know, we've got another project where we issued, we issued reduced fees and you know, it sits, it's a gravel pile. I, I have that concern and, and I just want to know what, what we, what we're doing to try to, you know, try to resolve that situation, not that, not Pine Street. I'm not talking about Pine Street, but you know, I don't want this to happen on this project.
Sure. So we, of course, had that fear as well. That I think the trust has coalesced around the idea that, you know, this has been kind of a painstaking and slow process. But now we actually have an agreement that was made. We have met with the, the folks that are financing the project. It's more of a partnership than a trade-off. So I wouldn't be here if, if I wasn't comfortable with the fact that they was going to move forward. We're also, our council's involved. There's a grant agreement in place that has performance stipulations in it as well. We pay as the invoices come in, so this is not an account that they can just hit when they need be. They have to submit their invoices to us. Everything's itemized. Everything's checked through with our council. So we stay on top of the progress of it with a much greater amount of scrutiny than you have available to you at Pine Street.
So one, one other question, Bruce, you said something about that they're transferring the project or moving the project. Are they selling it or are they just transferring it to another entity?
No, it's just going to be an entity move, which should fall under what is allowable under the PNS as it's currently written.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
And unless some meteor falls or, you know, something happens, this should be done before the PNS comes to its conclusion as far as the extension that was granted. We should be inside that window. So it's a good project. It's going to be a nice building, be much more attractive than what's up there now. And it's going to provide a substantive amount of affordable apartment units, mostly one and two bedroom. Every little bed helps. So, and it's going to actually get done, which is, you know, also nice.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
How many spots, like within the confines of the building, parking spots that is?
So I, I believe you're, you need somewhere between 1.5 and 1.7 per unit. That's for total.
Number, and that's going to be within the confines outside of this 50 to 55?
Uh, no, that ratio can be hit with a certain amount of off parking, reserved parking.
Okay.
So what you'll probably find is that if there's 130 units and that's what they, they go with, you know, you'll probably have 100, 110 parking spots that are exclusively there and then put as many in the other location as you can get to that 20% mark. And I think they're going to do some closed garage tile parking, which would be some part of that ratio as well.
So I'm, I'm just kind of getting to like the 50 to 55 spots. I'm trying to sort out like it's not municipal use, obviously, there was going to be shared. I understand that. But how many realistically, I know it's hard to, to guesstimate, but would, would be available to the general public if in fact you only have 110 kind of over to the right. There might be 50 or so.
I'm, I would
Needed still?
I'd be hesitant to say it'd be any less than 50. There's a considerable amount of room there. It's just, you're going to get to a certain point where they're going to get to the required parking and they're just not going to want to pay for, add the expense. Now, that's something, of course, that can be flexible. So when I say, you know, 50 to 55 would be over there with some type of quasi-shared parking, it could be more. Depends on what type of deal gets worked out.
So I guess, so the thing is, like, if it's 1.7 and it's the 130 units and there's about 110 that will be within the confines of the, give or take, within the, the
Well, you'll have to have more there. Some, some of that will be covered. You're, you're going to have 150 some odd spots that are like on-site that where
Okay.
the actual complex is.
And then plus the 50 to 55.
It's just tough because when you get into the planning board process and they're going to put, you know, retention basins here, stormwater management systems from, you know, the CONCON requirements, what the planning board is going to find acceptable for that ratio.
Sure.
I'm guessing they're going to be around there without having, you know, a B before them. I mean, the idea behind the overlay district and what we packed in there when we, when we sent it to town meeting was designed around something like this. So it just won't have the commercial component of it. It's, it's just not going to work financially speaking.
Yeah, so your, your point's well taken. It's, how many, how many of those spots are going to be used by residents?
Yeah.
And what's left over for that shared?
And then if I scoot, you know, if I take 20 of those spots because we've got something going on in the common and then these people come home and now they're out of luck. I guess I'm just trying to sort out like what, what within, if you're looking at the 50 to 55 to maybe help us on the town side, eh? Maybe 20 or 30 of those might help us. Without, without, take out the 20, let's say, do you have enough with the 35 plus what's over there for the entire population?
I think from this point on, when we start working on the land design and stuff like that and, and getting an appetite for, from the, the planning board where it is, that's when we can make the request.
Because obviously it's been something we've been talking about with the businesses, so that would be
There's opportunity there to become involved in the actual special permit process. So we're at that point now. So if you were to go to him and say, look, we want to use up all the available spouts there, we can certainly, you know, extend that to GSX.
Okay.
You have a select board rep on the, the trust as well that can pass that message along. So, you know, if you want to make 100 spots there, well, they're there. So it's much, much more efficient, you know, for them while they're there with the machinery or whether they're doing the digging, things like that. So the opportunity's there.
Makes sense.
And last question, then you, so we mentioned, I'm assuming previous boards talked about like the permitting and then the sewer. Now, the water, that isn't a done, that's something new. You mentioned that you've discussed with Evan, but that still would be within the confines of like the Point 8 or whatever you're looking at for the ask on this end, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, how we approached it before, I went to Evan and asked him to be the bridge between the trust, GSX, and the water, just because of course they're their own municipality. As everybody knows, but just in case you're at home wondering why you guys don't have the authority to, to do this. They had worked out something with the hydrant fees. Maybe Mr. Blake can speak to it, but either way, I, I did talk to Evan today just as, just to make sure that, you know, I had all the information he was going to need to go back to them and say, okay, does this deal still work for you?
Okay.
So essentially, it's not going to come as like a, they're not going to give us just a waiver of the fees. It's going to be kind of a loop around. And they use the hydrant fees.
As a, not to offset that.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I think that's all I had that hadn't been answered or quite.
What else you guys want to talk about?
Uh, so I think my question to you is, what do you need in terms of support from the board and what's the process moving forward?
So if there's no more questions from this standpoint, I would just like to have, or ask you folks to have staff or direct staff to work with us and our council just to properly paper whatever transactions need to be papered. So it's not the trust and the, the town or their own separate entities as far as these funds are concerned. So we'll just need to paper it properly. Because, you know, in six months, if I'm not on the trust or if there's a rotation on the trust, I need something that lives beyond just the people in the room saying, oh yeah, this is fine. This is great. So if we codify it, you can vote on it, it lives on. So in, you know, a year and a half when these permits come due, you can say, this is the piece of paper that we negotiated. This is what we're on. So if Evan and William can draft something or participate in drafting something with our council.
Okay.
You know, in a couple of weeks, maybe we come back and we can have something to vote on and sign.
All right.
Whatever your schedule permits. It's going to be like three months before we really get knee-deep into the planning board process.
Sure, 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 sure. Makes sense. Okay. Any thoughts on that in the board?
Sounds pretty standard.
Makes sense to me. Okay.
Great. Perfect. I'm free to go.
Thanks. Absolutely.
Brilliant.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mrs. Spinney.
Right on time. All right, fantastic. Uh, next we have a review of the Cable Oversight Committee charge. Uh, so we approved a new charge a few meetings ago. And there was discussion about one of the items on the charge, which was the Bullet Point oversee the cable fund and its use. We got in the packet some links to the state. Kind of description of how cable advisory committees will work and then some links to how other towns construct theirs in terms of the charge. So it really, I think the, the main point of discussion tonight is what do we do about the, the funds? And are there any, and sort of management of the funds and are there any additional, any additional scope that we want to put into the charge or, or take anything out that's already in there? So I'll just open it up for discussion. Any additional scope, uh, that we wanna put into the charter, or take anything out that's already in there, uh, so I'll just open it up for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jeffs.
So, uh, good summary, um, I, I had written down some notes just in case. When we discussed this last, you know, uh, it felt like, as we were revisiting the charter for other purposes, it might be a good idea to just go through and determine if everything is still relevant, these are still the processes that we follow. I had asked a couple of questions of Evan, which we, we forwarded out the materials that he sent me, uh, after that, you know, I wondered more if we should move cable over, the oversight committee to function more like a finance committee, uh, where cable budgeting lies mostly with the department head, but they work with the committee on, uh, keeping tabs over expenditures, and it gives them the chance to vet selections and, um, you know, uh, ask any questions that they may have, provide any input. That was, that was my kind of original train of thought, and, um, had wondered at that meeting if it was something that the board wished to discuss, um, or if there were, you know, any other questions or conversations we wanted to have with, um, with the oversight committee and, and, um, really, just focus on that, that one bullet, because I, I, I believe that to be the difference between the, between an oversight and, um, an advisory committee, so.
Okay, um, if it pleases the board, I think what we should do is, um, get some input from the cable oversight committee, um, to understand how the, uh, management direction oversight of the budget happens today. So that we have some context, uh, so, Bob, over to you.
Uh, thank you, um, I think there are, uh, several, uh, committee members, um, two of us online, and I think you have at least one, maybe two in, in the room.
You bet.
Uh, we're, uh, we're speaking as individuals, because, uh, I didn't hear about this until late Thursday, I really wasn't able to sort out whether a, uh, agenda needed to be posted, but I think, uh, we're just providing, uh, individually providing input. The, um, the charge is actually, the terminology in the, in the charge was actually very carefully crafted a bunch of years ago. Oversee, not necessarily, uh, absolutely control every penny. The, part of the reason for that, or a lot of the reason for that, is that we've had an unusual, uh, progression in the way cable works in Grafton. There are, uh, really three ways that public access, well, access, uh, cable access, uh, is structured in, uh, the areas that I know about. The classic one, um, that we started with, was that the cable company provided a studio and, uh, personnel. It continued working that way until recently, when we moved, when we, when we redid the police station into a studio. And Charter, who had been providing, um, the, um, the person all, all that time, um, wasn't willing to have that person come to our studio. So, um, we started, just, just town people started running it, we had had town people augmenting the Charter person over many years. So, those folks just went up to the studio and started doing, doing the job there. So, then that moves to the, um, sort of, we crafted this to, or the, the charges is crafted to fit that whole period of, it's 40 years now, very nearly. The, the, the third arrangement that is most common in my experience for access, is that it's actually done with a, um, 501(c)(3). And, um, they, um, range somewhere between completely handling the money themselves, or i- in some towns, there's a, there's a working together thing. We never did that, uh, we didn't, you know, we, we had our, our own progression, but I think it's been working well. Uh, we, we started with nothing in 84, and, um, we built, uh, darn good access, and it's grown. I finally got the Board of Selectmen to allow themselves to be on video, that, that was, that was a non-starter for years and years. But, uh, you know, moved forward with all of that, and, and, uh, I, I think we, I think we've done a really good job. Now, as to the, oh, and, um, just, we, we, we set up a scheme, oh, years ago, where, um, s- smaller expenditures, uh, can be, uh, okayed without a committee action. It used to be through the, uh, touching base with a, with a chair, um, but, uh, I think Bob Berger, who's our treasurer, is the best one, uh, he's been handling all, all of that part of it now for quite a while, and I think, uh, it would be best to let him explain more about, uh, the finance, uh, side of it. I think he's there, isn't he?
He is, uh, yep, we'll bring him up then, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I approach?
Of course, come on up. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And probably made too many, Mr. Chair, thank you for having us tonight.
Absolutely.
My name's Bob Berger, I'm speaking as an individual and a resident of Grafton. I am also on the Cable Oversight Committee, and I've been performing the duty as chair, not chair, I, I was chair for a while, as secretary. Um, just to go back a little bit with what Bob was, was saying, um, Cable Oversight Committee is really overseeing, right now, we're talking about the money. We're overseeing the money for the Board of Selectmen, because, you know, whenever we have these large projects, we, we can't sign off on these projects, they all have to come up here. So, just for, just for an example, I wanna just tell you a couple of examples that the Cable Oversight Committee has funded out of the 5%. And I, I usually say this at the Finance Committee meetings, because I always like, you know, boosting cable access. We, we put the fiber F-man in around the town, and we connected all the buildings with fiber, so the town can grab anything they need from those fibers. That was a cost of about $500,000, out of the cable funds again. This room, when, when I first started here, was, was a terrible selectman's room, I couldn't hear a thing, so I said, "You know what, we gotta do something about this room." So, we designed this room, $500,000 for this room, and when we did this room, we took the equipment that used to be in this room, and we brought it up to Conference Room F, and then we just updated that for $250,000. And over the years, we threw another $60,000 in it, and now, we're spending another $70,000 to make that room a mirror of this room. So, when you have an overflow, just like in town meeting, everybody's in the gym, and they're in the caf, that's gonna happen here now. They're in here, you have 48 people, you get 50 people, now you can open up that room. Um, and we, we, this year, we're paying off the bond for that $1.4 million beautiful building at the end. But why I'm saying all this is because the Cable Oversight Committee, I really think of us as being in the AV club, you know, back in high school. We're the AV club, um, on steroids, because that's all we do, is hyper-focus on what are the needs for the town for cable access? And what can we do to improve the equipment and keep the technology up to date? That's really what, that's what I do on there, because when you get into all these other nuts and bolts, and it, it's just way over my head. So, that's what we do in Cable Oversight, and the problem I have is if you take away that particular bullet that we're talking about, then there's really no need for the Cable Oversight. Because we really don't have public access on, on our stations right now, we're government, we're government, we're school, and, and some sports. But we, we can't, we can't, um, we can't monitor the content of that, the only time we monitor the content is when you have a producer come in and produce a show like, let's say, Jackass. And we have to make sure that that show is not on at four o'clock in, in the afternoon, it's on at 11 o'clock at night, or whatever, whatever those numbers, those hours are. But, um, I think our, our big goal is, is to handle the money and make sure the projects go where they're supposed to go. I gave you this report, and on the top of the report, just let me go through it real fast, is to year-to-date, we've brought in with our 5% fees, um, $196,000. And then last year, we carried over, because it doesn't show it in our software, so, I'm on page one, ledger history detail. Um, and last year, we brought, we had a hun- $1.1 million that, that we had to bring over, but the software doesn't do it. So, I have to pull all this together and cut and paste it in, in a PDF from four different reports. Just so we can make sense of what we really have. So, right now, this, up to today, we've spent $113,000, so our funds available right now are $1.1 million. And then you go down to the summary, and it talks about salaries and all the other miscellaneous lines, uh, that just gives us a real fast percentage of where we are in the year. If we were over 55% on the first line, we'd know we did something wrong, because we're more than half the year over. This is, this is what we manage this account for you, that's, that's all we do.
Ken, um, thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Very, very helpful, uh, can you, um, uh, or anybody, um, who wants to speak on it, just, uh, talk about the, um, the, the process of, uh, envisioning projects, so you mentioned a, a few projects that you guys did, um, you know, how do, who, how does those get envisioned? What's the process to get those, um, scoped out, engineered, um, and then essentially presented, um, and then signed off, um, you know, who?
So, we're, we're, we're in the middle of that right now.
Okay.
So, our next project that we're going to be signing a contract with, with, with this board.
Yep.
Is FinCom Room F.
Okay.
And it's a two, three-year process to do that. So, um, I think last fiscal year, or the fiscal year before, we had an article in our budget for $25,000 for engineering, to engineer what we need for FinCom F to make it look like this room.
Yep.
So, then we presented that to, um, I presented it to the committee, and then we, um, had a motion to forward it off to the Town Administrator's Office, so he can look at it. You might have, you know, seen it, because once it goes there, you know, it disappears from us.
Sure.
Got approved, Town Meeting said, "Great, okay, now we go," so now, we have an engineer, says it's gonna cost this much money to do that. So, now our engineer puts it out to bid through our procurement officer, um, it came, and now it just came back. I think we're in the middle of awarding the bid, but I don't think we have the signed contract, but we're, we're really close to William and the contractor signing a piece of paper, and then it's gonna come to you, and then the construction's gonna start. So, it starts with, it starts with somebody in, a member of the committee, says, "You know, I think what we could do this year, cause we're trying to plan four or five years ahead, is, I think what we should do is, that room's not very good for technology, cause we wanna match this room, let's start talking about that." And that's just the process of how things evolve.
Did I answer your question? It did, absolutely. Okay, I'll shut up for a minute, and see if anybody else has any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
Yeah, you, you know, this, this whole thing started with the Cable Committee wanting to reduce their number from seven to five. And it's, you know, now it's evolved into a, who's spending the money, who's doing what, who's doing this, they've been doing this for 40 years, and some of these people have been on this committee for 40 years. I think they're doing a fantastic job, and I think we should just reduce it to five, the number that they asked, and move on. I, I don't think we need to get into how they do their projects, or how they do that, everything goes to Will and Evan, and, and it's, it's a, it's a normal process. And I just think, I think we should just reduce the thing to five and leave it alone.
Thank you, Mr. Mead, uh, any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Almo.
I think I agree with Mr. Mead, is the bullet point we're talking about oversee the cable fund and its use?
That's correct.
Okay, so, money comes in, it goes into this pool, you come up with an idea of what you wanna do, cost money, we spend money, you bring that to Town Administrator, Select Board for approval, it gets done. So, you don't, you just oversee that money, everyone else has sort of a hand in.
Absolutely.
Making sure that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think I agree with Mr. Mead.
So, I guess, um, I don't necessarily disagree with the fact that we may, uh, believe the charge largely as, as is. I think it is our job, since this hasn't been, uh, thought about.
Mm-hmm.
In 40 years, it has been largely the same for 40 years, uh, or for quite some time, we didn't even have a formal charge, as far as I know, that was, uh, uh, signed off, uh, in any official way, um, look, it's been working fine, I think the projects that you guys have done are phenomenal, I think the, uh, the work that, um, you know, Grafton TV does is, is a huge benefit to the town. Um, and I have no complaints about that, but, uh, while we're looking at a charge, and while I'm looking at signing off on a charge, I'm gonna think about it, I'm gonna look at it, see if it still makes sense, and not just copy what has been done. So, Ray, I think that's where, where we are today, um, the, the charge that we've had and the way that we've operated is a little different than the way it's been envisioned by the state, and I think that's why we're just, uh, asking the question, um, should we be doing it another way? Um, so, I don't have a really strong opinion about it one way or the other, but, um, I think it's, uh, absolutely, um, it's prudent for us to, to ask the questions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, just one second, Mr. Haszinger, come in.
Yes, um, I, I read that, uh, piece from the state, that really reflects, um, really old, uh, situation, um, more, mostly defining, uh, the pro- prospect of having a committee negotiate a cable license. And it, it doesn't speak too much to what happens afterwards, uh, in most, in, in, back, when that was, uh, you know, that was sort of the rule when, when Charter was coming to town. And there was a committee before the Cable Committee, before the Cable Oversight Committee, um, that, uh, did that, and then it went away, uh, when the, um, when the license was, was, uh, executed, um, and then it, issues began to arise, and, um, the, um, Select Board, uh, created a, a Cable Oversight Committee, um, to, um, to deal with it, with, with it and the company. Oh, let it go.
Okay, um, I, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, um, from the standpoint, uh, you know, it's in the, um- in the, um, responsibilities for the committee, there's inform, educate, reporting, uh, monitor compliance, um, you know, um, keeping up on, um, you know, questions, uh, handling complaints, those sorts of things. So I think it, it is as much an operational, uh, charge as it is, um, negotiating the, uh, the contracts. And, uh, the only, the only, uh, difference that I really see from what's, you know, in our current charge really just is that, um, the budget piece. Um, I, I see the budget piece for myself. Oversight doesn't indicate to me direct control. There are mechanisms for, um, discussions and, uh, review and sign off by other bodies. Um, so for me, personally, um, that bullet point's fine and I would just leave it in. But, but I think that's, that's why we're, um, just exploring this topic. So, um, any other comments, questions? Mr. Jefferson.
Um, do we want to give Mr. D'Tomma a chance to speak just as a department head quickly?
If you'd like.
Sure.
I don't have a prepared statement or anything. I wasn't sure if you had specific questions. But I was looking, I was following along at home over the last few weeks and I realized that a lot of what Mr. Berger and Mr. Hasenger said is true, um, with minor changes. The, the public access channel and the educational channel and the government channel, they run 24 hours a day. Everybody in town knows that the focus is on the government proceedings. We live and die by what, by what is seen on Grafton government television. Going backward in time a little bit, just to kind of put a more central focus on the history. When I came on board in, uh, 2013, um, I was told that I was a department head by Mr. McInerney. It took a long time before I actually felt that that was a true statement. And then it wasn't until recently that, um, we moved from South Grafton to the new facility just down the hill and, um, and as Mr. Hasenger made reference to, things changed. Some of those things changed, uh, during COVID within the committee itself. And some of those things changed when, uh, Mr. Bissard came on board. So there is kind of a, a muddle in the middle, if you will. I'm told every day I'm a department head and I run the department and that I'm in charge of the budget. I think there's still a little muddle in the middle somewhere. I think that's as clear as I can be for where I stand. Looking at the, looking at the website that Mr. Hasenger referred to about the differences between advisory and oversight. I think back in the day when the cable committees or the cable providers offered the town of Grafton a king's ransom to run the cable operation. Yeah, it made sense to have an oversight committee because that was a lot of money for a small town. Time is going to come in the future where that money is going to dwindle down. We all hate to see that day come, but it will happen, I think, eventually as technology progresses. Somewhere along the way, there's going to be a tipping point where that dollar amount is going to be reached. And then the decision will have to be made. If you don't make a decision tonight, six months from now, five years from now, sooner or later, you will have to make that decision. It's not going to be easy. I understand that. Other than that, I don't know if you have any specific questions you want me to try and tackle.
So I guess I'll just put you on the spot a little bit.
It's because I'm on camera, right?
Since you're on the spot.
Yeah.
You do it to us.
Okay, go ahead.
How's it feel to be, uh, on camera?
Completely foreign idea to me, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, um, you mentioned that there's, uh, you know, the, the budget management of the budget, control of the budget. There's a, a little bit of, uh, lack of clarity, maybe. How, how, how would you envision that, uh, being clarified? Well, I guess first, do you see that as a, as a, an issue? And, and is there anything that the board could do to help?
Well, having recently stepped down from the cable committee, perhaps that might've, that might've contributed to the, to the issue. I'm not sure. I can only speculate. The process for doing the budget now is, um, I meet with Mary Loria. And before I forget, I just want to say on camera, God bless Mary Loria.
I'll second that.
Because she takes somebody who's budgeting and finances not in my wheelhouse and she makes it seem quite simple and easy to understand. So we took the first steps and prepared the budget for fiscal year 25. And in some categories, we actually reduced the amount of the budget. And as Mr. Berger reported, uh, just earlier, is that as the bond gets paid off not too far from now, that, um, our budget will just kind of settle in at a, at a smaller amount. There are always going to be things that happen at the cable studio that will require huge amounts of money to, to fix them. If the server that we're currently being carried right now, uh, for broadcast and for streaming, if that crashes tomorrow, it's, at the time, it was an $85,000 investment. I'm not even sure what it would cost now to replace it. If, um, if the roof blows off tomorrow, we're all going to sit and meet and talk about a way to come up with money to pay for that roof. But the budgeting process, as far as I'm concerned with, with me sitting down with Mary and coming up with a preliminary budget and then presenting it to the cable committee for them to review and then receive their input. That's the way I understand it should work, whether or not it does. I don't know. I don't want to speak for the rest of the members of the committee. I don't know how they feel about it, but, uh, it, 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 it should be as crystal clear as possible for all of you to understand, for the town administrator and the assistant to, to understand myself. Personal opinion, so.
Got it. Okay. I don't see the process you described necessarily as being, uh, in conflict with the charge that we're looking at tonight. It's a bit of an interpretation of that, right, in practice. But that's just, that's just my opinion. Any other comments or thoughts, questions? Yeah, go for it.
Circling back to Ray's comment, this, um, you definitely expanded into a much larger, um, conversation than I originally thought in, in asking the question. I'm appreciate that you're open to having a conversation and, and you viewed it the way that you have. I've had a few conversations with, uh, you know, the affected parties, um, in, in, in here, uh, and we've outlined pros and cons. And I think it's fair to say in listening to what we've heard here tonight and in some of those, some of those talks that regardless of whether we call it oversight or advisory, the pinch points remain the same, the, the, the sticking points remain the same. And it does remain about clarity. You know, so for, I, I think distilling that down, what this board could recommend, regardless of whether we, you know, chose to remove that bullet or, change a word in their name, is that the committee work to have what may be an uncomfortable conversation with the department head where, um, processes are outlined, responsibilities are further fleshed out and, and maybe some boundaries are established. Can certainly appreciate that we've been doing things a certain way for a long while. And there are good things that come with that, but, um, if it's something that, that we need to change and, and we need to let go of some of those past responsibilities to make this process move forward in a, in a better fashion, um, that we have, we just have that conversation, you know, uh, ego-free, figure out where those lines are. And then secondly, that, um, you know, as, as Mr. D'Tomma indicated when he stepped down from the committee, uh, to try and reclaim some of his personal time, that we allow him to submit as much as he possibly can to the, the committee in report form and only ask him to be directly involved in meetings when it's really necessary. Understanding, of course, that there will be times you'll need him to come in and, and discuss things and, and whatnot. And that's, that's reasonable, but trying to limit that as much as we can.
Makes sense?
Do you have anything else for me?
I don't. But appreciate you coming in and offering.
Yeah. I really appreciate all the information. This was great.
And.
Thanks for the invite as well.
I'm very glad we had this conversation and, uh, your description of kind of how things are going to evolve, um, I think is definitely a great heads up. It's something that we talked about in finance committee, uh, every, every year. But, you know, you talked about the server. I'm thinking about, I don't know how much actual hardware we put in to this room, but a half million dollar project is probably a hundred grand worth of equipment or whatever, more. Yeah, so, you know, that equipment's going to be good for eight, 10 years and then it's going to need to be replaced. So that is going to have to come from somewhere, that fiber, uh,
F-man.
The F-man, yes.
Yeah.
Which, uh, nobody on the planet knows that acronym, but I do. You know, that, at some point, uh, that's going to need some maintenance and probably.
Every year we give that maintenance.
There you go. Um, so, uh, yeah, so, um, it's a, it's a good point. In the coming years, we're going to need to, I think as a, as a town, think about how we integrate some of that budget into the rest of the town as those cable funds dwindle from, uh, the current source. Because as far as I know, there's no legislation that's pending or being contemplated to replace.
They're going to have to. They're going to have to because.
You say that. This is the government.
Well, I know, but once we start cutting the cord, then Congress is going to have to figure out how they're going to grab, you know, to fund. Because here we're fine, but it's Midwest where they really depend on their cable access for a lot of their information.
Yeah.
They're going to have to find a way of getting money out of that internet, a penny, a two pennies, to fund what they're losing. But I, I did want to add one thing to the comment, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
The way I envision this all working is almost like the planning board, ZBA, Board of Health, where they all have a department head and they all report, town administrator, reports to a committee or the chairboard. That's how I envision everybody working together as one team. And that's, that's what I think the, the model we should be going for.
Uh, I agree with that. Um, that makes sense to me. It's in line with how most of the town departments work. Um, and I think it's a good process, uh, for sure. So, um, I, I think as Mr. Jefferson said, there, some discussions need to be had amongst yourselves to kind of figure out the nuts and bolts of that.
I agree.
But, uh, I would expect, uh, Mr. D'Tomma, as the department head to show up to FinCom and present the budget and, you know, go through that process this year, being over, you know, overs- uh, with oversight and advisory and, um, you know, some input obviously from, from the committee, so. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Hasenger.
Yeah, um, of course, we haven't seen the budget, so we don't even know, uh, what's in it or whether it matches up the way Bob was talking about, uh, Bob Berger, uh, with what's coming. Throughout, throughout the history of, uh, cable, the way it's worked is that the person in charge of the studio has come to the committee meetings to discuss and, and interchange, um, thoughts, uh, and ideas, and we've worked together. And that was true till, you know, a couple of months ago. And that's the way it has worked. That's all, that's all we really need. But I think we should, oh, oh, yeah, about all the equipment that Bob D., um, mentioned. We've been on that. You watch almost any cable meeting, um, from almost any time and you'll see me talking about where's the money coming from, we're planning for that. How's the equipment doing? Where do we stand on that? We were. Okay. I, I think that, I think that we're, we're doing an awful lot of that. We always have and, and we should be able to continue that way.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody is, um, asking you not to do that. Um, I think there, we are, I think, contemplating a little bit of a, a change in Mr. D'Tomma's, uh, role and how he functions as a department head, as a little bit more traditional department head role with regards to the budget. That's the way, that's what I'm hearing. So, but, uh, I do need to take a little bit of a step back. I don't think the select board tonight has anything to take action on. So I'm going to recommend that, uh, we take no action on this and move on to the next agenda item. You guys are more than welcome to come in anytime. Part of, uh, some of the charges, uh, that, uh, that we see from other towns have to do with, uh, you guys coming in and, and reporting to the select board. Or doing reports to the town on a regular basis. So I think that type of, uh, ongoing relationship would be really helpful, so that we have more familiarity. I, I got a big eye opening tonight in terms of how all of, uh, that, that part of, uh, Grafton works. So.
Excellent.
I really appreciate that, um, but I would love to see you guys, uh, in here more, to, you know, promote the projects that you have, you know, going on. My experience is we kind of see you guys when there's a new, uh, contract, um, and, and that's really about it and.
So we can get together and we can get here. Let's try quarterly.
I would say yearly is probably enough.
Okay.
Maybe twice a year if we, if.
No, I like yearly.
But let's, let's, let's start there. Um, and if, you know, uh, we can always have ad hoc meetings, uh, at any point.
Okay.
So, thank you, everybody. Um, I really appreciate everything. Mr. Hasenger, I'll give you the last, uh, give you the last word.
You were saying you want to know things that are coming. Um, have you heard about the wifi in the parks?
Yeah, I just told them. In the parks?
Yep.
Love it.
In the parks. Um, this is, uh, Fiona, um, has been working on, on a, I can't begin to explain it all, but, uh, there, there's a grant, there, there's money the town has and some of it, it can be used, uh, to do part of that. When I found out about the project, um, I told her about the F-man, which, you know, I know something about. And that made a big difference actually to how that, uh, how putting wifi, public wifi in the parks would work, uh, or could be made to, to work and, and be affordable. We've been working, all three of my committees are working on it, or well, I, I'm, I'm planning board. But, uh, the IT committee is, is participating and, uh, the cable committee has been, um, discussing, okay, the, the, some cable money, uh, just as it did for F-man originally and for some of the additions since, um, can contribute to this too as, uh, as it may be needed. That's the way, that's the way it's always worked. And, um, anyway, now, now you know that you, i- if all goes well, you'll be hearing about that project, when it, when it comes, when Fiona's got it, got it ready.
I look forward to it. Uh, thanks so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And thanks, thanks to you guys as well.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, all right. Lost my train of thought. Lost in the agenda. Let's see, next we have recent fees. Trash bag fee increase request. Mr. Brassard, over to you.
Yep, so as we discussed, uh, during the budget presentation, part of that budget, uh, relies upon us making sure that we're keeping our revenue at or above 50% for the, uh, trash program. And so this is. And so this is a request to move or fix the trash bag fees for to eight dollars per small bag roll and fourteen dollars per large bag roll for July first of twenty twenty four. This would fund the program at roughly fifty-two percent for fiscal twenty-five, and as we did last time, we'd leave it in place for two years, so come fiscal twenty-six, we'd be at, it's actually like forty-nine percent, and then we would reassess. We're, just one aside, we are looking at other options and other programs that are maybe available that would be a better way to approach this. Obviously, pays you through is driven by how much trash you produce, which is one of the main drivers in reducing people's waste output, at least that's the theory. But there are a couple of other programs or different things we can do to maybe eke some savings out in the long run. But anyways, this is what program we have today.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
That's all right. Ray can start.
Okay, Mr. Mead.
So, so the I kind of texted back and forth with Evan today about this. The only thing, and I know we discussed this two years ago or three years ago, whenever it was, about people who cannot afford to be, to, you know, buy the bags or, or, you know, need to get a discount on the bags. I just wondered, and I suppose I can ask, Will, Will, do you know where that is on the website? Because I checked the website and I couldn't find it anywhere.
The policy is on the Policies and Procedures page, which is under the Select Board tab, but the program has run out of the Senior Center.
Do we have anything in the Senior Center page that denotes that?
I would have to look, but I can do that right now.
Okay, I just, I just think we need to get it on the website so that people know.
Yep.
You know, that we do offer that for, for people who can't afford, you know, the, the full price or any price of the bags and, and just so it's out there and people know, know that it's out there.
Sure. We did also, just as an aside, we did add that program to the food bank as well in the last iteration of this process.
Ms. Foley.
I'll just say that when this came on the agenda, I'm, I'm sensitive to folks in town and, you know, more taxation and whatnot. And we had just, or at my house anyways, I just received my tax bill, and I had a pretty substantial increase in my tax bill, right? And then I saw this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. So I'm sensitive to that myself, like, oh, my goodness, you know, this is another thing, even though I actually don't produce a lot of trash in my home, but I'm sensitive to other folks. So what I did was I reached out to about a handful of towns around us and ascertained that in fact, these numbers are very much in line with the towns around us that use a service like this. There are obviously other things that, like, say, Westboro does, but, you know, I did kind of look into that, and so these numbers aren't like an outlier. Not that I would think that you'd be proposing an outlier, but just so folks know, for what it's worth, I suppose. And then the question I had is, you know, relative to like the, so the Harvey contract, like, where are we in that?
So we're looking at a contract extension with them. We just provided them with the prevailing wage sheet. And so we should have something in hand within the next thirty days or so.
Previous was a ten-year, was it?
What's that?
The previous was a ten-year, ten-year contract?
No, they're three-year contracts, usually with a two-year extensions, two one-year extensions. And so generally speaking, we have really good service with Harvey. I will say that compared to my last community, the number of calls we get for complaints is so much less. It's, it's quite refreshing. So I don't really see a reason for us to change. They were the sole bidder of the contract last time. So, you know, we'll, we'll probably do two one-year extensions, provided that their increases remain, you know, reasonable. And, you know, and stay with, keep our relationship with Harvey and then go back out to bid. That would put us in fiscal twenty-seven, to go back out to bid.
Okay, and then another question that actually was brought to me by a couple of residents, not myself. Does the, our fees to Harvey or whatever that contract looks like have anything to do in terms of the increases with how poorly we may be doing with recycling? So in other words, creating a lot of trash in the recycling, and does that factor in at all? And if so, you know, maybe some community out.
Right, so right now, not really. I mean, the, the, the theory behind that is it should be a hundred percent, because, you know, we, we've, we've had this. I've been to a lot of seminars about, you know, the, the contamination rate and all of the rest of it. In, in practicality, because recycle, the state of recycling in Massachusetts is pretty poor, and the market for recycled goods is pretty poor, it doesn't matter as much. However, if we ever get our act together, per se, then it would substantially impact us, what, what the contamination rate was. It's actually pretty neat if you go to E.L. Harvey's yard. This is the stuff I find to be really neat. They have this like really tall building that they conveyor up all of the, the recycling. And then it's got this laser monitored and air-driven machine that like spits the bad stuff out of the building. So it's just stuff flying on the side of this building. It is amazing how much they've automated. That's just an aside. It was the highlight of my year. Honestly, it was pretty cool.
Over there, do like the, the thin films mess that whole thing up? Because I know at Wheel of Breeder, that was an issue.
Yep, so they, they do on some of the machines. I think that some of the more modern machines are starting to do a better job of that, but they, they do thin membranes is, is is a problem, as are anything like stringy, I'll say, wraps around some of the, some of the heads. But that's one of the reasons this air-driven system was supposed to be really good is because it would separate that before it even got to the machines that do the grinding and such.
Okay. Do we know what our, do we ever get that number about in terms of our?
Our contamination rate? I've never seen our contamination rate. They, they may have it. I can ask. We do get our like tipping amount and all of those, that data point, but. Yeah, that would be interesting.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
We have had some residents who have reached out in the past because they've noticed that neighborhood trash that is not appropriately bagged is getting picked up, just as, as regular trash would. First, I guess a thank you to Evan and Cindy and Amber at the TA's office because they quickly get on the phone with Harvey and have that discussion. So I guess I would remind anybody who's watching that if, if you see things like that, it's, it's kind of a see something, say something situation. We don't, you know, the town doesn't necessarily know that this is happening unless it's brought to their attention. And that would be, I guess, my real request in this is, you know, I, I know you guys have reached out to Harvey's a few times. I, I still hear that it's an issue here and there. I really would, would like to see them do better with enforcement because it only, you know, hurts our system when it gets bypassed like that. So you know, if, if we're all gonna do it, we, we gotta play fair, and that's where I'm at.
Makes sense. It's been nice to not, not have a ton of bag complaints.
Don't even, well, that is a problem, isn't it?
It's also easier when you stay off Facebook. There was, it was a heated thread this weekend about the proposed bag fee increases.
Yes.
And quality error bags and on down the line.
I'll go check that out.
It's an exciting read.
It is a heck of a thread. Yeah, one of the longer ones that All Things Grafton's had in quite a long time.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to raise the trash bag fees to eight dollars per small bag roll and fourteen dollars per large bag roll effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Often, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. All right, moving on to message board locations. I think this was something that, Ray, I know you wanted to, had some ideas on this.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Get us started anyways.
Yeah, so, so I spoke with Carl Moison over at, over at Credit Union. And they, he was bringing it to their board, or he was gonna talk to their board about it. They're, they're putting in a new sign system over at their, over at the Grafton Credit Union or Homefield Credit Union. And they might be interested in allowing us to use part of the sign or part of the posts, the lower section, to put in a, in a town sign there. I was gonna go to Savers Bank and talk to them, but right before I was gonna go to Savers Bank, we transferred two point five million dollars out of their bank. Didn't feel that I would be overly welcome walking in there. But I, you know, I think the town sign should be anywhere from, you know, Snow Road, the Stop and Shop, we can, we can discuss this with Stop and Shop, again, at the Credit Union, Savers Bank, or, or somewhere within, you know, between, you know, Swoops and Squirrels there and the and, and Snow Road, something, something in there. I think that's where everybody ends up, everybody in town ends up going by there. And that's, you know, that, that would be a good spot. But again, the Credit Union is, is still, still discussing that, whether we can, you know, glom onto their sign, which, you know, would be really good for us, though, as far as dollar-wise, so. That's as much as I have.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Sorry. And I certainly appreciate Homefield's offer. I'm not sure I want our sign to be second fiddle real estate or necessarily attached to one single local business. I think I'd probably have some concerns about that and I don't know. Yeah, I, I I hesitate to, you know, drop that. I don't have a better suggestion, but I just, I want to throw it out there.
Mr. Chair, I also know the owner at, at Stop and Shop Development. You know, we could, we could, I could ask them if they would be interested in putting a sign in the grass area at, you know, at Stop and Shop.
Yeah. Ms. Foley.
So for me, I'm not a fan of that corridor just because I think it's oversaturated anyways with signs. So I think it would be a little lost in, in that area. I would much prefer if we can, and I know there might be still issues, I'm not sure, but we're talking about maybe raising this knoll out here in front of the police department, like, you know, somewhere over here, even though it's maybe not as, it's not a hundred percent traversed or as one hundred, you know, it's lesser, perhaps, folks coming this way versus going on one twenty-two. Just seems to me a standalone is how I envision it. Like, when I go by the sign in Westboro, the one in Milbury is fabulous, by the way. It's, it's, it's handy when it's just a standalone and that's what you're reading. You know, you're not looking at the weather up top and, and the name of the, the business and whatnot. But if that's possible, then it's not possible, right?
Well, I think that one is the most possible.
Yeah, probably, just because we have infrastructure in place and we have full control over the property.
And the sign that we have out there representing the, this building is not the nicest sign ever anyway, wouldn't, you know. If, I don't know if we'd have to remove that in, in order to do this, maybe not, but.
It would, it would be great to remove that.
It's not like.
And create, like, again, the facade around the electronic part to say Municipal Center with an arrow to the right so people know.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, that concrete sign is, it's, was in Arbivites when I started. And we cleaned it up, but it really didn't make it pop any, any better. So it's not something that really draws your eyes, so you'd know where to go.
So you know, the corner at one forty, one twenty-two, best spot for, for many reasons, one could say, but I think that up here is not that far off. In terms of the, you know, traffic going by, getting to various schools, getting onto major throughways. And we're not gonna, you know, try to catch every, as many people as you can, but if that's possible, I think it's a, a great spot. And for what it's worth, this did just come up at the master plan meeting again last night, a gentleman requesting, you know, how do we get more information? We don't, how do we know what's going on in this town?
Yep.
Which is why I think this could be a beneficial thing, even as far as like when to vote, which for some folks, it's intuitive, but not for everybody, so.
Right.
And this is, you know, near a voting place, so. Those are my thoughts.
I, I agree with your idea of having a more standalone oriented sign that maybe isn't as in the hustle bustle of yeah, the, the most active, busy part of Grafton where people are trying to have drag races down the road.
The less, we need, less distraction out there, the better.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with that. Makes sense to me, whether the Municipal Center and this, you know, I'm not sure where that is, but that idea that we would have something that is more distinct, easily, yeah, without as, as much distraction, makes a ton of sense to me. I think it makes some sense too to, you know, as we are investing and we've continued to invest in this part of, of Grafton with, you know, the landscaping around the Municipal Center, the, you know, all the work that we've been doing inside the Municipal Center for, with painting and, you know, all that, the parking lot. You know, this is becoming a real nice place for people to come. And I think a sign would really, would really help that too and, and very much be in in harmony with, you know, the, the way that we've been thinking about improvements as far as town infrastructure goes and whatnot, so. I, I'd like to, yeah, but I'm not opposed to someplace out on one twenty-two, but it would, I, I do think it would have to, we'd have to look carefully to make sure that it wasn't too, too busy, crowded in without signs, because I think it's, I do think it would just get lost. But that's just me. How are we gonna bring this to a decision? Because we've been talking about this for quite some time. I think we've got a quote in hand, which is about seventy-five thousand.
Just for the sign.
For the sign.
Right, it doesn't include trenching, electrical, you know, kind of the rest of it, the, the facade that goes around it. So I mean, I think once we have a location, so let's say we say, you know, down in front of the police department where the municipal sign is now, right, that becomes the location. It gets easier for us to put together some concrete numbers because we'll know exactly where it's gonna be and we know where our infrastructure is and so on and so forth, so. That's kind of the next step, and then, you know, we can develop a, a more pinpoint quote and then go from there. I'm assuming at, at that location, it's gonna be a double-sided sign. You know, or, or, yeah, and we had talked about like four by eight, I think was the original quote. Or no, four by six, maybe. I might have to pull it back up, then we just need the facade and running all the infrastructure.
I think there were a couple sizes in there, but yeah, like four by six, four by eight.
Yeah, yeah, so. And, you know, I, I'd say the next conversation I would have would be with the chief about sightlines and making sure that, again, because there's an intersection there, so if we put it right there, is it a problem? Do we need to look a little bit down, you know, but in the general area, then it gives us, I think, better direction than, than, you know, just kind of this, the concept that we've been talking about.
Let's do it.
That's.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just ask the question, does the board need more information to make a decision about the location? Are we happy to decide tonight?
Beyond, I think, what Evan just said, with the chief weighing in on any sightline concerns, which I think is valid. I was just gonna add, you know, I'm, I'm in the same, the same boat where I, I haven't heard what I consider to be a more effective location, and similar to what Ms. Foley expressed. You know, the, the, the noise that occurs around that sign, and even thinking about it down front. You know, we had suggested the possibility of putting it in front of GCTV, you know, and I try and think about it every time I drive past the front of those two entrances and wondering if even there, it competes with the school signage, you know, which is the standard, you know, you, alphanumeric stuff that you put up, but just the close proximity there and, and debating that location versus closer to the corner of Brigham where the current sign is, so I'm, I'm still leaning towards the corner of Brigham just, just because it, it feels like the optimal location.
Well, I'm in agreement with that. Mark?
Yep, me too.
Yeah, okay. Um so it sounds like we have consensus on the board. Um Ray, you're the odd man out. Uh sorry. But um I think that's the that's the.
Again, thanks.
It's a good effort.
That but yeah, I mean, we appreciate.
Thank you. Matt, I think I think what.
Go ahead.
Matt, I think what we need to do is we need to get a, we need to get more of a, you know, if if that's where you guys wanna put the, you know, the sign, that's, you know, that's great, but I think we need a price. I think we need.
Yeah, yeah.
Evan just said.
Know what all this is gonna cost, right, that's making decisions, so.
Yep.
Yep, I agree. Um so we'll proceed ahead uh on that basis. Um I I do wanna do wanna make a little bit of a pitch, um not so much about the location, but about the e- evolution of some of the technology that's happening with signs. Um things have really, over the past two or three years, taken a massive leap, uh so that the signs that you see in Lake Westboro way better than that now. Uh LED that are outdoor capable, um they're not inexpensive necessarily, but the content that you can put on those is unbeliev- it's mind-blowing.
Right. Picture a Madoffton with American flag.
Waving.
So one of the things that, when I talked to the the vendor, one of the things that he had recommended is that once we figure out where we wanna put it, they will bring a sign and put it up temporarily.
Cool.
So that we can get a visual of what that looks like and what the display would would have to offer.
Awesome. Uh I love that idea. Um and I would love, if it's possible, a a couple options, like a standard option and maybe an upgrade option.
Yep. I think I think it, when I spoke to him, his only limitation was what he had onsite at any given time.
Yep.
So um he would show us, you know, obviously what different things look like, but then some of it would have to be our understanding of if we go to this next level, you're gonna have two more colors and the pixel size or DPI or whatever they're calling it is smaller, and so there'll be a little bit of that, but we'll we'll get pretty close and a couple of options.
Great. Um um that sounds good. Okay. Um, everybody happy moving on then? All right, next up, we have um the TA annual evaluation. Um so in the packet was the form. Um does anybody feel like we need any updates to the actual evaluation form?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mead.
I I've asked this for for three years and and it hasn't changed yet. Um not that, not that, may not tonight either, but, you know, um I I've always done, you know, evaluations of people and and it's always, uh you know, they they don't meet expectations. They meet expectations, they exceed expectations, because the, and I know who who I think one of the things in there, and I don't, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. But he's great. I mean, I'm not sure what kind of valuation that is, but, you know, we have expectations of the town administrator and how his job is and how he's managing his job. And he either meets them, exceeds them, or doesn't meet them, or or, you know, the the five, the five lines.
Yep.
And and it, in there, it says, you know, he's great. I mean, great.
So so the current cra- uh the current system is uh from one to five, we have one representing poor performance, two is below average performance, three is good performance, four is great performance, and five is outstanding or exceptional performance.
Right, but I think what, you know, we need just change, uh change performance to expectation. It's what we, it's it's our expectations of what he, how he does his job. That's the only thing I have a problem. That's it. And, you know.
So, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know. I listen to everybody else.
So Ray, I I think it's a p- in in a in a, in effect, it's a performance review, and that's really where I think it it comes down on it, would be measuring his performance. So I I think that, for me, the the language is right. I uh I would say it's performance against expectations. It is about performance, but it's performance against what our expectations and what we've asked him to do. I mean, it's.
So and and Matt, and I'm just bringing this up because I've brought it up three years in a row now, and and I've lost every year, so. Just bringing it up again, that's all.
Okay. Does anybody else uh wanna take that up to simplify or change any of the language? Um Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Jefferson. I I um I like the the five number system. Um I feel, cuz I I like having a bit, little bit of variance in there. Um I think last year, uh there might have been some uncleanness uh about scoring as a three. Um and that was something I wanted to just reiterate this year, uh and and yes, it's very subjective and individual. Uh we all have our different expectations of what Evan should be performing and marking accordingly. Um but I think at the end, we had touched a little bit on just making sure that that the board was better aligned on what we consider, you know, good or great, um so that maybe our scores were a little closer to consistent. And to me, I I guess it's just getting out there that um my understanding would be that a three is not a bad score on things. A three means he is doing a good job. Uh you know, a four is above that, obviously, it's great, that's that's the implied thing. Um you know, you you've gotta be, it's a, it's an above and beyond thing, and um I'm one of those people that's, I I think it's tough to get a five out of. Like, you're really gonna nail something to get that five, so. I'm not saying, I'm not implying that that there aren't areas where you're.
I I count it against you every every day, Andy.
Um, you know, just, I I, you know, I think if, having that that understanding amongst us, um that you know, a a three is not a bad score, and it's it's certainly not marking him down.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alamo.
I agree with Mr. Jefferson. Um I have the done uh tons of performance reviews, and the guidance through human resources is, five is a very rare uh, you know, uh it's very rare to attain a five. It happens, and the two or three times I gave a five, I was questioned about it. But doesn't mean a bad thing. Three is great. I grew my business several times over the years, and I got a lot of threes, which, you know, is weird, because you would think, well, we exceeded. Um but uh yeah, the the reason for the for the five is to have the variance, to have the ability. If you're thinking to yourself, it's good, it's great, it's kind, it's not where I want it to be, you have the ability to go from a one, a three to a four, or a three to a two, whatever that may be. That's one of the reasons. It's very, very common practice for corporations to use SMART goals like this, in this rating system.
So I think what we're saying is uh we will likely see more threes and fours.
It's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I'm good with the scoring system.
All right. Uh as uh as average to good performance, I guess.
Well, I guess we'll find out if that's uh.
I don't wanna be, uh, yeah, all right, fine.
I'll just, Mr. Chair, if I might, just chime in, because I think I was the one that was kind of questioned last year, cuz I think my scores were the ones that were the outliers. And the way I do these is exactly that. I'm very familiar with the five-point system, and three is incompetent doing your job, et cetera. Five is very rare for me. So I know last year that there's there were some variants, but this is clear as day to me. If we chose to go with a five point system, you could go to a four, and then you're gonna be looking at probably more fours, right? Um for, maybe it's not outstanding, but it's more than doing the job and doing it well. So with a five-point system, I think that this is is good, and to Andy's point, I think it's about people understanding what these are, and that there's no question this year about going back and changing scores or dropping a high or dropping a low. I think if we all look at this objectively, um it's, it works, you know?
Yeah, I I agree. Uh Ray, do you feel more comfortable with that?
No. No, 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 but that's, that's, that's fine. You know what, I'm.
I look forward to the conversation next year. Mark it down.
I evaluated construction people my whole life, I so, you know, it's, that's, that's how I, that's how it was done, but that's, you know, that's fine.
Okay.
It's fine.
Uh, all right.
I think he's, I think he's great, to be honest with you, you know, but it's, you know.
We're just never, we're not sure if that's a four or a five, but um.
I smell a fire coming from Ray. I'll tell you that right now.
All right, uh let's talk about, so there's um just a logistically, um how do we do the uh department head assignments? We've we've.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can, do you just give me a list and I randomly assign them?
Um you don't talk to me about it at all, cuz they're anonymous, so you generally go through William and Amber for that.
Fine.
And then and then you can divvy them out.
Okay, sounds good. Uh I will uh get that started then.
Will's making a note.
Awesome.
He can talk to Amber tomorrow, and then they can reach out.
Great. Um, okay, let's.
Last year, we were assigned.
Yeah.
It was, we didn't, it wasn't chosen, like.
Right.
I was given the name.
Oh, so they're gonna pick the names.
Maybe it's ran, you know, a little random.
I think they randomize it and then do it. I don't know why I'm talking about this, I'm not involved in it.
All right, I'll I'll speak to Amber tomorrow, find out how we did it last year, and we'll replicate the process.
Great, awesome.
Amber will remember.
I'm sure she will.
Yes.
Uh, okay.
The tape, yeah.
Um, so uh let's talk about uh timing then. Um I don't wanna take too long on this, cuz uh Evan's contract just started, and I think it's a good uh time to set some goals now. Uh the only thing that's a little awkward right now is if we set any budget goals, he's obviously right in the middle of it, so that's gonna be a bit of a challenge. Uh so just, I guess we just need to think about, uh, sorry, I'm thinking about something else. Never mind. Uh moving on, uh so in terms of timing, um so I'll get the uh the department head names out over the next week or so. Um I would suggest that we take uh, what do we think, a week or two?
Last year, um I don't remember when the assignment was made, but uh I just, I went back and looked quick, and we regrouped here and discussed the results mid-March.
Mid-March, okay. Um, all right, so um, yeah, I'll coordinate with um with staff to get the names out for the department head interviews. Um and let's get those done by the uh end of the month. Um and uh I'll, yeah, send out some instructions on how to get those evals uh sent in. I think they'll likely just go to Amber. Um I don't like any, uh, I'm really adverse to any uh dropping any comments, any scores. Um I I think uh if there are outliers, I wanna see them, and I I want uh I want Evan to have an opportunity to um see the full feedback from everybody on the, I I think everybody's is uh equally uh valuable and um and should be viewed kind of as is without being uh modified or touched, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jefferson.
One last note, uh only cuz uh this is Mr. Alamo's first year doing this. Um we don't include department head names uh that we interviewed or anything like that. Wh- what you submit to Amber will, is then what's provided in the packet into the rest of the board, so. I did make the mistake of including one name last year, felt bad about it, assuming it would be edited out. It's not, so don't include any.
Good point.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Um, yeah, so this stuff will all eventually end up in a packet uh and go out for the public's consumption. Um so uh any more discussion on that, any? Okay, uh moving on. Um what else do we have? Okay, goals. Um so we had discussed um earlier, well, I guess it was last year, um a couple of options. Um a lot, and w- w- we were talking about doing a strategic plan. Do you guys remember that?
Yep.
I wasn't here.
Um so the strategic pl- plan is something that uh typically is facilitated, um and it's a a little bit more comprehensive uh than that's kind of typical goals and objectives that we've been doing. So that's uh an option um for us to consider. Um
Was that like the SMART goal system? Is it similar?
Uh uh so Evan gave us, was it Westboro's?
Strategic plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I gave you, I think I gave you a couple of different ones, but yeah, strategic plan is just more all-encompassing, right? So what you've been doing are just goals. We we do still model them off SMART goals, so we, you know, um we 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 do that, and we generally do one exercise as part of the conversation. So one year, we did a SWOT analysis. Uh I don't remember what we did last year. There was some component that's about kind of the vision of of the town. But strategic plan would be a little bit more in-depth, right? You set your mission and vision, your all all of that on down, much more inclusive of the staff. It's a bigger process, so if it's gonna be longer down the road, then then I think you'd keep, I think what you're suggesting is we keep kind of what we already ha- are doing.
So I think uh it's really important, uh because of the public input element, I think it's really important for us to have the master plan in hand before we do a strategic plan as a board. Um I'm pretty firm on that. Um so we, because we've got a lot of other plans. We have the housing production plan, uh that had significant public input. We have the uh uh open space and rec plan, uh that was a really, you know, multi-year project, lots of public input, I think. Um and these are all fairly recent. Uh if we get the master plan in hand, that would be the time with all those in hand uh to move forward with a strategic uh plan, uh which would be kind of overarching, looking at all of those and trying to connect the dots. Um taking into account all the public input that went into those reports. So so my suggestion is this a year, this year, we do something that is facilitated by Evan. Um more workshop style. We have two or three uh meetings um to discuss goals, put them, and it's just more of a a little bit of a spreadsheet exercise. Um Evan can bring us up to date on progress made to goals that we defined over the past two or three years uh made to date, um so that we can discuss those and um see which we wanna um sort of check off the list, which we wanna keep on, um and and proceed ahead uh on that basis. Um does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I just have a question. So for our, from our goals meeting last year, like, is there anything anywhere?
Mm-hmm.
I know.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, we we actually use ClearGov now, so I have all of your goals uploaded into there and and tracking.
So on the select board page, there's like the twenty-two goals, but so somewhere else, it's a twenty-three? I mean, we didn't really establish the goals. We've met, and then there was supposed to be like a document, I thought, of some sort, and we, I don't know that we.
Yeah, it was in the budget book in the last fiscal year, that product from your last goals meeting. Um and then I took, then I took that, and then I've now taken all of that data and uploaded it into into ClearGov.
All right, so I'm going into ClearGov, and where am I heading from there? I can, I guess I can do this offline, do this separate.
Yeah, we, go ahead.
You wanted to just send a a link out to the goals page?
I can do that.
Look at it, that'd be great.
Yep.
Awesome. Um so I think we just do that same process again.
Okay.
Uh if that makes sense. Um and uh so I'll just schedule a workshop uh for the next month. We can get going on that. Um and we'll take as many uh meetings as we need to get those confirmed. Um I would suggest that we um don't do it here. I think something like the community uh barn, uh the community room in the library, something like that would be a more comfortable place to kind of roundtable the discussion, um if that makes sense.
Works for me.
Yeah, okay. Um, great. All right. Uh anything else anybody needed from that? All right, I'll get the uh the workshop organized then. Um let's see, select board reports. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Jefferson. I'll let Ms. Mead go. Ms. Mead.
Uh EDC had a uh had a uh business-to-business meeting down at the Post Office Pub on the twenty-fourth of January, and it was unbelievable success. Uh the room was was filled, and we had uh Representative Meridian there, and Senator Moore was there, and um members of the board, uh Mark was there, and and Andy and Emery. It was, it was just a great, i- it was a great thing. Uh all the, I've gotten feedback from businesses uh whom, some of the businesses who attended thought it was was great, and uh you will be doing that every year, um you know, to uh try to get in, get in touch with the businesses and and get their, get their thoughts, and uh you know, John Allen did a fantastic job. Uh people from CMRPC were there, and it was um Fiona was there. It was really good. Uh so I just wanted to uh shout out to everybody who uh helped and, you know, and did a great job to make it a success.
Terrific. Mr. Jefferson.
Yeah, uh, I would, I would definitely echo that, um, the room was full, it really. Uh, it seemed successful in generating conversation between the business owners themselves, um. You know, as well as between the, the state and town officials that were there, um, lots of, lots of discussion. Uh, CMRPC at the, said at the end of the night, they were able to really move around the, the room and engage with attendees and gather a lot of insightful data. Um, you know, so it should be a, a really productive event, um, would definitely love to see more of them in the future. Uh, also wanted to thank the fire department for extending the invitations to the board for the retirement party for captains Bob Egan and Tom Mulcahy and. Uh, firefighter Skip Courier, um, we all, we all want out again with the, with the reps, it's uh. It's always great to spend time, not only with the people who keep us safe. Um, but their, their families and, and loved ones and to hear stories from their amazing careers. Um, they did make a schlep all the way out to Auburn, but it was great to see so many retired faces, uh, who also made the trip out there.
It was uh, totally worth it to see Ray meet as MC. Who knew?
Roast Master General up there.
Well done. Uh, yeah, it was a great event, um, I really thoroughly enjoyed myself and uh, it was just a really. Great opportunity to see the uh, kind of. Family, uh, that is the fire department, uh, and all of their loved ones, uh, all together in one place and um. Could, could see how close, close knit that community is, so, uh, it's such a, an important part of graft and. Any other select board reports?
Mr. Alma. Yeah, I agree with that and uh, I actually wanted to say, uh, that I was particularly appreciative and grateful to be a part of that. The uh, the retirement party for the firefighters, for the two uh, captains and, uh, and Skip, um. I also kind of wish the town had a chance to see that, because when you see men. That are just so selfless and courageous. To share their stories and just, it's, it's really, it's, it's humbling to watch them limp. Up to accept their award and be roasted by their dear friend at the same time and laugh it off. Um, it's really humbling to see those people do that, because they, they sort of joke about falling off of roofs. To save people or to help people, and I'm looking at you, Ray, right now and I'm seeing you smile. That's kind of the spirit of the individuals of the fire department, to hear Chief Matthew talk about it, to hear the people that I sat. Who at the table behind me, just looking on and res- with respect and. Almost laughing at this stuff, it's just who they are and it's just what they do. I really do wish people in the town had a chance to see that, because it reflects incredibly favorably on those people. I was also a little bit moved by, um, Captain Mulcahy's daughter. To talk about her father in terms of being her hero is also particularly just, it's, it's, it's just, it's such an incredible thing to see. So I was really glad to be a part of that. Thank you for inviting us, Ray, thank you for inviting me. And um, you know, it was just a wonderful time, really was, those are just incredible men, I hope to see them. You know, around the town, so I can shake their hands one more time, it's a really wonderful thing. Um, also at the EDC meeting, that was um, that was an interesting conversation, I think someone said we'd like to see more of those. I think it's a great idea to continue to engage, uh, our business leaders in this town. And us in particular, and have them come together too, I think they appreciated that. Um, and the last piece was, um, a few of us went over, Andy, myself and Evan. Went over to visit, um, Maggie's house. And uh, just to evaluate the ongoing kind of conversation about the flooding. Uh, well, the flood, uh, with the waters that flood her driveway. And that was particularly enlightening. I recommend that when we need, we have these kinds of things, can we just do the field trip first? Cause that was really enlightening, oh, what a lovely lady, what a wonderful individual, and I hope that we can find a way to help her, I know it's not my. You know, I don't have any legal ability to, to do that, but I hope that we can do something, that was enlightening. So, that's it.
Thanks. Emery?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, in addition to those events, I also attended the Small Stones Festival up at the Harvest Barn and it was actually. Really, a really a great night, I went on the night for the Worcester um, Photography Club, which on Tuesday, and there was a speaker and. I, from my understanding, it was really well attended, the art was just fabulous, so kudos to that group for being really flexible and switching things around and making it work. Um, and then, uh, just to note, I did go and speak at the senior center, um, relative to composting. Couple of weeks ago and they rolled it out the next day, Shannon asked me to come in and, and just do a little um, spiel for them, which I did. And um, my understanding is it's going great, I saw Nancy in the hall the other day and she said that they're. Planning bigger and better things, so um, seniors were all amenable to giving it a whirl. And uh, on the day that I went, Shannon went so far, Shannon and her team, I should say, um, went so far as to get compostable plates just for that particular. Meal, um, so it was a little, little bit of a learning experience and we kind of went through recycling versus composting, so that's. Good and maybe it'll help with our trash issue, um. We had an ARPA meeting the other night and, and you may be talking about this, but basically we just kind of discussed the status of the projects. The, the committee in itself is, is kind of wrapping up and will most likely just, um, see these project, or not we will see them, but. They will be seen through via this committee with Evan's assistance, obviously, and kind of see where this all falls, I'll let you speak more to that if you'd like. Um, so that committee will be dissolving essentially, they've done a lot of work on it, and then we had the master plan committee meeting, uh, last evening. Um, we voted on a, um, a vision statement that is subject to be. Uh, tweaked as the process goes, so it's a step. And then we talked about the first two items, um, that will, that we'll be looking at in terms of the chapters, which are affordable housing and. Economic development, and so we'll be meeting in another month to start discussing those first two, so I know that. You, we talked a little bit, um, at the fire event about how that's going and it's going, but it's going somewhat slowly.
Slow and steady? Okay, is there a timeline that's up in, uh?
Fiona mentioned last night, uh, an additional grant, I don't have my notes from that particular meeting with me here, I, O A. I don't know the acronyms, but sorry, um, I have it at home, but.
I was, when you said O, I'm like, oh.
No, I mean, it was like O A something.
Yeah.
Uh, so anyway, she. They received a grant to potentially extend, um, I think the involvement of CMRS PCI, I assume, to June of. Twenty twenty-five, that would fund that.
Yep.
So, I'm not sure if that's what we're looking at, but we have, yeah.
Alright.
Well, hopefully we're not looking at that, but there's now monies to enable this to, to keep going.
Right.
Alright. Very good, uh, over to you, Mr. Brass.
Okay, uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, so the budget is drastically different than last time I presented it to you. Not at all. No, it's drastically different. This is all I do now, I sleep, I think about charts and, um, so since we last met. When we, when we met, we had fifty-one thousand dollars to the good. Uh, uh, we then got the cherry sheet numbers and the Worcester, uh, Ristive Retirement Board numbers. No bueno for, for us, uh, we wound up at negative one hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, had a couple of meetings, made a couple of cuts to a hundred and seven thousand, then we got the BBT number. Uh, we have eight more students attending BBT and it's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar increase over last year. So then we went back down to two hundred and two thousand, um, with some, some tweaks to revenues. Um, and then we, we made some pretty aggressive, uh, moves. Most expenses are level funded from last year and this is representative of. Uh, a little elimination of two part-time employees to get us to the positive side. Um. So, still ongoing, uh, the legislature hasn't taken up the cherry sheet numbers yet from the governor's budget. Um, those could come in higher, um, I did pledge to the school committee just a little while ago. That if the chapter seventy number comes in better, that whatever that delta is, we'll just add to the, yep, um. So yes, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do, hopefully other numbers come in better for us. Um, we are working on health insurance, health insurance looked to be a seven point one percent increase. Um, however, because we're part of this mass strategic health groups, uh, or group. We are, um, looking at some alternative ways to turn back some of the, the, the. Payments that we make into the system, um, especially from our prescription drug, um. We, we get, we get money back off of purchase, prescription drugs as part of the program, um, we may with that. Uh, pro- with that change to the way we structure our finances, bring that number down to sub-five percent, so somewhere in the four percent range. Um, and we're also having a conversation about aggregate insurance, uh, because we. We're a big enough pool now that we probably don't need that and that would be additional savings that the town would, would incur. Um, so that's, that's I guess the rosy, or the, the sunniest spot currently, is that we may have some, some savings in health insurance. Um. Pretty much all I, I'm gonna go down the rabbit hole in the budget, it's a, it's now a twenty-eight slide presentation and we don't, we don't need to go through all of it. Um, I, I recommend you watch the school committee, cause I just, just did it upstairs, but i- it's gonna continue to evolve as, as we move forward. Um, the only other thing that I, I wanted to uh, bring up, I think, uh, were two things, one is ARPA. So at the, at, as Emery mentioned, so at the next select board meeting, um, we're gonna have, uh, two recommendations to. Um, fund two additional initiatives for the school department, they both are electronically based, uh, or software based. Um, and they are, um, mental health driven, um. They seem like really good programs, uh, Dr. Cummings and, and Dr. Trahan are seemingly really into it. Um, they think it's gonna make really positive im- impact, uh, to the students. So we're gonna, we're, we're gonna request that you fund those two things and then we're gonna also request that you dissolve the ARPA committee, um. Our work is pretty much done, we've done the initial outlays, any turnbacks or changes moving forward. I would recommend that the select board just handle them. Um. And, and I, I, yeah, so that, that's where we're pretty much at with that committee.
Can I just make a request that, um. We figure out how s- some way to, um, basically report on how the ARPA funds were spent. It like, in aggregate, um, we've had the discussions and there's been lots of.
We, we, we have that information.
Great.
We can, we'll, we'll just push it out.
Awesome.
Um, yeah, we have, we have a spending tracker and we have all, we have data.
The committee's been getting that every time we meet.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll push that out to you and put it on the website, we'll do all of those.
Yeah, it's more, it's more just what, i- in the end.
Yes.
You know, cause there's been a lot of stuff discussed.
Yeah.
What do we actually fund? What do we get out of ARPA?
Right, yep, yep, that's super easy, we, we, we have that list already compiled.
Great.
Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to mention, so uh, today, uh, myself and Fiona, along with Representative Meridian, Senator Moore. Um, Secretary Tepper from environmental, no, EEA. Energy and Environmental Affairs, I believe is that agency, uh, along with mm, her staff, um. And, um, Jean from, uh, Fisherville. Uh, we, uh, I, and uh, um, representatives from the media, we did a site walk, so we, we were able to subs- secure a grant. Just shy of two hundred thousand dollars to, uh, do an evaluation and, and uh, plan. To remediate the dam at the Fisherville property. Uh, so we did a site walk with, with everyone today, uh, went through the property, went over to the dam. Looked at the impoundment, looked at the potential areas that, that need remediation, um, really. Kind of cool to walk around back there, it's beautiful, uh, a lot of, a lot of nice ducks back there. Um, I won't go into the species of duck, but I, I, anyways, that's a different story, um. Bald eagle we saw while we were back there, um, it's just, just a really beautiful property in the back and so. Um, just, you know, thank you to Jean and, and Senator, uh, nope, Secretary Tepper for coming out. Uh, it was, was really nice and uh, heard a lot of positive feedback from the reps that were there from. Um, from EPA, um, and S- and Secretary Tepper's office about Fiona. And her ability to write grants and her diligence and following up and they, they just unsolicited, really great feedback, um. So I, I thought that was really cool, um, no one said anything about me, but that's fine. Um, no, I actually didn't know any of these people until we got, we got there, honestly.
You made a good hire, Evan.
No, I'm, I'm.
Good job.
I'm, I'm. I'm very, I'm very, I'm very proud, very proud of, of that, that hire, but she, no, she's doing awesome, but I just thought I would relay that to you, cause I thought that was really cool, just. Offhanded by different people while walking, just saying nice things about.
Right.
One of our staff members, I thought was really cool.
Yeah.
Um, so the plan is to, to do this design and then we've, um, Jean and, and, um, Jean Burnett. I was forgetting the last, his last name till just now, um, Jean Burnett, uh, he already applied for a FEMA grant that we've partnered with him on. To do the work after the design is, is complete, so hopefully we'll get some, some really nice remediation out of it. But it was a great walk, I learned a ton about, uh, Grafton history in that local area and. We talked, spent a lot of time talking about the history of mills and, and things, um, which is, to me is cool. Um, so yeah, just wanted to thank everyone involved and I, I think that was a really, was a really cool, uh, thing to partake in. Yeah.
Someday.
Yeah, someday, we're getting closer. I say we, I've only been part of it for three years, but it's, uh, yeah, it's impressive and, and I, like I said, I learned a lot, so.
Be great to see something happen at that.
Yep, well, we, we were, we spent a lot of time talking about how the goals of, um, you know, Fisherville. Are really in great alignment right now with Senator, uh, geez, Governor Healy's, um, plank, basically, right? So, housing, uh, environmentalism, cleaning up the sins of the past, those types of. Projects are, are near and dear to the administration's heart, um, so we feel like, you know, there's some, there's some advantage to be had there too, so.
Right.
But it was, it was great.
Alright, anything else?
I think that's it.
Ask us a second question.
Sure.
Yeah, of course.
Chair, just because it was not only in the Globe on Sunday and then there was a, an, uh, an NPR. Um, thing on Monday relative to the opioid non-money.
Yeah.
And I know that we, the last that I've heard here is we have a committee.
Correct.
Has, have, I mean, Grafton came up as like having spent zero, but, um, like, just a real quick.
So I'd like to, if I could do that update at the next meeting, just so I, I'm a hundred percent up to date on where they left it. Um, the last time I, I had a check-in, um. It was really the kind of the early stages of the committee and coming up with the direction that the group wanted to head.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and I think, I think what we're gonna see is no money, no money, no money, and then.
Sure.
You know, we're off to the races, so.
But the committee's.
Yep, they, yes, I do know they've, they've met and I just haven't, uh, caught up with the chief. The, the chief and I have been discussing it, but we haven't discussed it in probably a month, so I'd like to catch up with him and I can. Put that in the next TA update and let you know where we're at.
Thanks.
Sure.
Fantastic. Alright, uh, we are on to correspondence.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson. Um, I guess procedurally, I don't know if this is, any of this has been discussed with you. Um, we received the, uh, Conservation Committee's recommendation to purchase a parcel at eighty-seven Milford Road. Um, assuming we'd be using CPA funds for this, or i- has there been any other discussion about funding mechanism?
Nope, so I think this is step one, so, um, we were, we got, um, pinged by, um. Joe Laden, uh, from Upton, formerly from Grafton, of Grafton, um, and uh, he is working on a project in. In Upton with property that's right across the, the water there. Um, and reached out and said, would, would Grafton be interested in kind of doing a joint project together and getting some conservation land around this? Kind of sensitive area, we said, yeah, let's, let's talk about it. Um, conservation was the first step to see, you know, is there interest in this being conservation land? They were, so then I suggested to Leah that the next step would be to reach out to the board via a letter and say, we're interested in this. Um, and then the board would put that on a future agenda and kind of kick off the discussion of, uh, you know. What's the value, what's the process, where do we get the money?
Cool.
So that, that's all that that letter is really designed to do.
Okay. Uh, my next question was, uh, who's gonna talk to us about it?
Probably me and Leah.
Alright, well, we'll get it on the agenda, um, yeah, I definitely wanted to, uh, discuss that one as well. Important area and, uh, anywhere we can continue, uh, with these contiguous, uh, tracts of land that are. Uh, left as open space for. Um. Especially the, in that area, the wildlife corridors, um, cause it goes, you know, backs up into Hassan and Massett and that whole. So as much of that as we can continue extending, I'm, I'm definitely in strong support of.
Yeah, it does seem to have a, a pretty good, um. Swath of that, that corner of the river there would be nice to.
Absolutely.
Make sure we preserve.
Yep, okay. Um, any other, uh, commentary on correspondence?
Are we, do we still have, or Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley. Ms. Foley.
Um, the GRR, it's kind of come up a couple of times. I'm, I think it's maybe in one of the correspondence. We're still working on maybe, I know we talked about this last time, right?
Yeah, so the, the chiefs are Falls in their court to get the safety meetings and all of those things back up and running. I did respond to one of the correspondence questions about the railroad whistles. Very nice response from the resident, so, you know, I, I think that went, went fine, but Yeah, was there another one in there?
We're not going to necessarily have GRR come in here. We're gonna have chiefs Kind of get these things going.
So as far as the safety meetings go, I really think that's their
Sure.
Their bailiwick. If you were looking for other commentary, I would say they would come here. But it depends on what year.
Uh, we've received the Bob Carroll email, I think is the one you're referring to, where he cites some stuff from one of their recent reports.
Yeah.
And we, we said we'd, you know, like to bring them in at a future date.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, exactly. So just have to.
And it's also, I think, one of the goals, right? It's in one of those, yeah.
Yeah, yep, for sure.
Makes sense.
Would you extend them that invite for, uh?
Yeah.
See when they can come in?
Sure.
Please?
Sure.
Uh, I guess I just wanted to also talk about the, uh, uh, people walking on the thin ice. Like ripple, I think. As far as I'm aware, we don't have any policies on that, right?
No, and I, I will respond to the resident. Um, I just didn't get it today. Um, but I, I will respond basically with, we don't have any policy. It's really The person's responsibility to ensure that they're safe. But also that if there's a safety concern, the select board email is not really the avenue To do that, right? You, you meet and discuss things every other week. So if there's a problem or concern, Call GPD and they'll go check it out, and if they believe it's unsafe, I'm sure they'll call that person back over and You know, Talk to them.
Absolutely, okay.
But I, I can, I, I, it's on my list of things. I just did not get it off the docket today.
Okay, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, It's unfortunate when you see people doing dumb things, um, but It happens, and we are relying on people's, uh, common sense and judgment in terms of walking on thin ice and We have a lot of ice in Grafton in a lot of different places. Don't think that would necessarily be, I couldn't think of what a policy or an enforcement action would look like for Walking on ice. So.
I could chime in. I wouldn't want to be responsible
No.
On this committee for that.
Nope.
Um, yeah, so, um, sounds like a good police, uh, Engagement, um, as it's happening. Um, okay, uh, anything else as far as correspondence goes? Alright, we're moving on to resignations. First is Metalli Biswas.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
You can say something?
Yeah, can I, can I talk about this for a second? So the, the email from, the letter from Mike Bruni is in there, in the, in this packet, correct? Is the board going to Assign someone to meet with Mr. Bruni and myself? What, what is the path forward for answering that, or are we, or you not answering it, I guess is the question?
Um, so you and I had a quick conversation.
We did, yeah.
If the board's amenable, I'm happy to, uh, accompany Evan and meet with Mr. Bruni. Uh, cause he did request a, a board member accompaniment in the next meeting, so I'm happy to do that if you guys are.
Okay.
Alright.
Just wanted to make sure everyone was on board with that and get that done.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
Um, alright, so, uh,
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Metalli Biswas as an alternative, alternate member, sorry, of the zoning board of appeals.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Upton, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, Mark Stefan.
Mr. Chair.
Stefanini in the Grafton Fire Department. Yes, Ms. Foley.
That was good, trying to rescue. I move that the board vote to accept the resignation of Mark Stefan, Stefanini from the Grafton Fire Department.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Upton, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, public comments? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
You have no hands on Zoom.
We have nobody in person. Next up, we have meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the board vote to accept the minute, meeting minutes. Can I do all three at once?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
As written from August eighteenth, twenty twenty, September eighth, twenty twenty, and October twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Upton, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor, by roll call, Mead.
Mead, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Upton, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Foley, aye.
Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.